Hey Terry, can you hear me clearly? You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yes, I can.
Perfect.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, who am I speaking with?
This is Jerry with AV.
Hey Jerry, how are you doing today?
Good, how are you?
Doing good.
Awesome, so yeah, we'll just, you have the opportunity, you have the ability to mute and unmute yourself whenever you need to.
Okay, sounds great.
Hey, good afternoon Terry, can you hear us okay?
I can, I can, is that Lisa?
Yes ma'am.
Hey Lisa, how are you doing?
Doing well, doing well, you sound good, loud and clear, are we coming through okay?
Yes, yes you are, I appreciate it Lisa.
Okay, I think we're gonna, we'll get started in just a moment.
Alright, sounds great.
Okay, Mr. Chair, just let me know whenever you're ready, oh. Okay. Working, ready to get started? Okay. At this time, I'd like to ask our IT professionals to start the audio tape recordings of the regular meeting and to admit any members of the public who have chosen to listen to the meeting online, and I'll pause for confirmation.
The recording has started and the public has been let in.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Washington and I serve as interim general counsel and assistant secretary of the Housing Authority of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, also known as Atlanta Housing. Before the regular meeting is called to order, please consider the following announcements. We welcome the members of the public who have joined us in person in the Pecan Room at the Atlanta Housing Headquarters located at 230 John Wesley Dobbs Northeast Atlanta, Georgia, for this regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Atlanta Housing. We also welcome the members of the public who have joined this meeting via audio conference. There's also an option to view the meeting live streamed. Meeting, members of the public can find the link in the notices section on the Atlanta Housing website. The live streaming link is also contained on the Atlanta Housing Board docs location. Please be advised that any members of the public who wish to address the board during the time for public comment period must have signed up on the public speaker signup sheet at the front door of the meeting room prior to the time the meeting is called to order or have sent in a comment by the time set in the notices of the meeting. A link to the meeting agenda, board resolutions and presentation materials are available for review by the public by accessing the link on the Atlanta Housing website at www atlantahousing.org/notices.
Good afternoon, my name is Larry Stewart and I serve as the Chair of the Board of Commissioners. I'm now calling this meeting, regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, to order. Today is Wednesday, May 28, 2025, and the time is 2:04 PM. Will the interim general counsel take the role to determine a quorum for this meeting?
Okay, Chairman Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Kirsch? Commissioner Kirsch? Commissioner Alvarado? Commissioner Alvarado? Commissioner Elliott?
Here.
Commissioner Faruki? Commissioner Hooker? Commissioner Hooker? Commissioner Martin?
Here.
Mr. Chair, there is a quorum present.
Alright, the agenda has been presented to the board for review and comment, are there any proposed changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I will look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Alright, I think moved by Commissioner Faruki and seconded by Commissioner Elliott. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Heard all ayes, no nays, no abstentions, so the motion is carried.
The minutes of the regular Board of Commissioners meeting held on April 23rd, 2025 are before the board for review and comment. Are there any proposed corrections to the minutes of the regular Board of Commissioners meeting?
Alright, may I have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on April 23rd, 2025? Alright, so moved by Commissioner Elliott and seconded by Commissioner Faruki. Is there any discussion related to the motion to approve the meeting minutes from the April 23rd, 2025 meeting? Hearing none, I will call for the vote, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Hearing all ayes, no nays, no abstentions, the motion is carried. Have any of the members of the public signed up to speak or provided comments in advance of the meeting?
Mr. Chair, no members of the public provided any comments in advance of the meeting, nor have any members of the public signed up to speak today.
Alright, well, as Commissioner Kirsch said last week, that is, you guys' loss, so we hope the public will take some time to review the things that we're doing and to give their feedback and comments on them. Positive comments are as welcome or more welcome than the negative ones. Alright, we'll move forward then. Please be advised by, that the Board of Commissioners, September 22nd, 2021 meeting approved the consent agenda protocol. Today, there are three resolutions appearing below that received unanimous votes of approval at the Board of Commissioners Real Estate Committee meeting that was held on May 21st, 2025. The collective group of resolutions on the consent agenda will be approved by a single emotion adopt, a motion to adopt all resolutions and the affirmative majority vote of the Board of Commissioners. If discussion on any resolution or resolutions is desired by a commissioner, the commissioner must make that desire known to the chair immediately following the reading of the consent agenda items. And the resolutions will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately or at the discretion of the chair. A discussion may occur prior to the vote on the consent agenda resolutions. Moreover, if a commissioner simply wants his or her vote to be simply, specifically recorded on any particular items, separate votes may be taken on the resolutions. Will interim general counsel identify the four, actually it says four.
Yes, Chairman, that is actually, yeah, my typographical error, I have my apologies.
No worries, four resolutions on the consent agenda for the record.
Alright, thank you, again apologies, Commissioners, before you are copies of the following consent agenda resolutions. Resolution number 2515, the Housing Authority of the City of Atlanta, Georgia seeks authorization to enter into a commitment for 12 permanent supportive housing Home Flex Haven units at 1064 Oglethorpe Avenue. Resolution number 2516, the Housing Authority of the City of Atlanta, Georgia seeks authorization to submit a disposition application and acquisition summary memorandum to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, execute an intergovernmental and land swap agreement and complete the transaction for the exchange of approximately 0.17 acres of H.A. owned land on the former Bowen home site for approximately 0.20 acres of land owned by the City of Atlanta in support of the redevelopment of the site. Our resolution number 2517, the Housing Authority of the City of Atlanta, Georgia seeks authorization to approve the final business terms and take all actions necessary to consummate the financial closing and rehabilitation of Columbia Commons, including seeking approval from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. And resolution number 2518, the Housing Authority of the City of Atlanta, Georgia seeks authorization to take all actions necessary to submit an acquisition summary memo, memorandum rather, and other application documents to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development to execute a purchase and sale agreement and to consummate the acquisition closing of the property located at 2479 Abner Terrace Northwest, currently known as Flipper Temple Apartments.
Hey, may I have a motion to consider, adopt and approve the consent agenda containing resolutions 2515, 16, 17 and 18? Alright, so moved by Commissioner, oh, may I have a second? So moved by Commissioner Martin and seconded by Commissioner Elliott. Is there any discussion related to the consent agenda items? Alright, hearing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, oh, aye, that's me too. All ayes, did not hear any opposition or abstentions, so the motion is carried. And since there isn't an executive session today, I guess we're gonna jump straight into a report from our president and CEO and I think that's gonna happen in abstentia by Dwayne Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for the support of those four resolutions in the consent agenda. We really appreciate your support, support and your thoughtful advice as to how we should move forward as an agency. You notice that Ms. Lee is not with us today in person, but she is part of the ether sphere that we have and so I get the privilege of presenting her report to you. You'll, I guess, what we'd like to do is, in the beginning, let's go to the next slide, please. What we'd like to do in the beginning is to talk about what impact your actions have had. And so if we look at that impact, resolution 2515, that was about the 12 supportive housing and so that's the first sort of slide and this is going toward our goal number one, creating a dish, creating and preserving 10,000 affordable units. If we look at resolution 2516, this was the one on the Bowen development. This is the repurposing of land, but it's also opening up the Bowen community so that there's now two entrances and exits to the community and therefore will help us accelerate the development of affordable units. If we look at resolution 2517, that talked about the rehabilitation of Columbia Commons and again, that is talking about preserving 158 units. And then the exciting potential acquisition of Flipper Temple is preserving another 163 units. And so, yes sir.
So, on Columbia Commons, I think when we did the question, I mean, the real estate committee meeting, there are some units in there that were not affordable that we are converting so they will be affordable. So there is actually some creation in that versus preservation, as I understood. Is that, am I wrong there?
No, you're.
Just for the record, too, that we're created, I want to make sure you got something that's on the creation side. We got a lot of preservation.
Thank you, there is some creation, I believe that's correct, Dr. Ferguson, that's correct, right? Yes, so.
God, I'm in his text message. So what, my question was, for Columbia Commons, is there, I think there were some units that were market rate that will now become affordable as a result and I wanted to make sure that I'm not misunderstanding that to be creation versus preservation.
Yes, that's what you mentioned last time, so when we actually, you know, track these items as far as our strategic report, those items will show up as being created because your, they're new affordable units coming into the ecosystem.
Preserve, I just want to make sure we make that correction.
Yeah, we certainly will.
Thank you for that clarification. And so, if we add all of those up, we see about 333 units are either created and or preserved. And so, we thank you for those four resolutions. If we go to the next slide, you'll see here, we've been busy. And so, we've been busy in town, we've been busy out of town. And so, if you look at the first picture, that shows, we went to the MTW Collaborative in Washington and this is a collaborative, a convening of housing authorities that are dedicated to innovation and affordable housing delivery. And we took our time at the Capitol to also visit offices of the Capitol. But this first slide, it shows the president, incoming president of FADA and in the middle, it shows the principal secretary, or what they call the PDAS, the principal deputy assistant secretary of HUD and this is a very, very important position because all of public housing is reporting up to him and he's reporting to the secretary. And you see Terry there, so just the three of them had the meeting and PDAS, I believe, had a couple of other individuals in there. But this was a very impactful meeting because it allowed the PDAS to see us and see Atlanta Housing and see Terry. And we've invited the PDAS to come and see us at some point in the future and we'll make sure that we let everybody know that that is happening. Also, this is very, very important because we wanted to let the PDAS know about our recognition of the resident renaissance and all that we were doing in Atlanta. And he seemed very, very excited about that and said he wanted to see us. When we had something that we could show, please invite him down and he would come and see us. We also let him know, Terry let him know that we were concerned about this proposed $163 billion of spending cuts that was in the president's skinny budget and let him know that that would severely impact housing authorities across the nation, including Atlanta Housing. The second picture, top, top right, shows the team that tracked the halls of Congress from one end to the other, going to various meetings. We had eight meetings with congressional staff. We had eight meetings with congressional staff. As you see, our team there, we did a tag team, and everybody had a sort of a role. What we were excited about is Ralph Mays, who went with us, and he's in the yellow tie. He was a former staffer, and so they really liked seeing a former staffer on the other side of the discussions, and we had some pretty good discussions. We met with the representatives, the offices of Representative Lucy Macbeth, Representative Rick McCormick, Representative Hank Johnson. We met with the House Appropriations Committee Majority Staff Director. We've met with Two Ways and Means Committee members, Chief of Staff, and we were very, very excited about that because the Chief of Staff doesn't normally meet on occasions with folks. And we met with the lead sponsors and cosponsors of the two thousand twenty-five low-income housing tax credit, and talked about our desire to see that bill go through, to lower the cap and all of that. But we also, every time we got a chance, we gave everyone our one two-page flyer. And on this flyer, I know you can't see it, but it talks about, we serve forty-three thousand residents, we talk about how many seniors, how many disabled, how many children. And then we talk about our residents that sixty-one percent makes seventeen thousand two hundred twenty-four dollars or less. We talked about Atlanta Housing serving about eighteen percent of the rental market in some way, some sort of subsidy. And we talked about the two hundred and seventy-two million dollars that we spent in creation and preservation, mostly creation last year, the twelve closings, the most we've had in a long, 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 long time. And then we talked about our housing choice voucher families and how we are in a public-private partnership, and two thousand two hundred thirty-five landlords are part of our program, and we're looking to expand that, and that we're spending about two hundred and ten million dollars, and nineteen thousand four hundred twenty-two units are currently on our program. We did that for a couple reasons, to let people know what the impact of Atlanta Housing is, but also we understand that the administration is very, very concerned or wants to understand their impact in terms of numbers. And so we wanted to let them know, we had some numbers, and we also let them know that these numbers would diminish if they did not fully fund us, and in fact, increase the funding because rents are increasing exponentially sometimes. So, we also then went and told them that we are building communities, not just providing subsidy, that we are providing economic empowerment, and we are trying to lift folks out of our programs, i.e. graduate from our programs. And so, they seemed to like that. We talked about our Lytech support, we talked about the necessary reasons to increase funding levels, and we talked about, please protect our HUD-held reserves, our MTW reserves, that all of those reserves are programmed for affordable housing in the future and therefore should not be offset or taken. If you look at the third picture, you'll see Terry and Tracy Scott and Fred Dodson, and this was the elevating Atlanta Housing for the Affordable Women's Affordable Housing Network. And this summit was in Denver, and Terry had a speaking role there, but also we wanted to show our support, not just locally but nationally, and it was a very, very good event. And the last picture is part of the MTW Collaborative. These were some of the individuals that were there in Washington for that collaborative. One of the reasons we wanted to do that, as you might know, Terry was recently appointed as, I want to say a trustee, but that's not, on the Board of Directors. And we wanted to show that support for her first meeting as a board member, but also we wanted to filter out and get the best ideas from the rest of the MTW collaborative member agencies so that we could bring that back. And we shamelessly borrow every good idea, and so we were listening to so that we could shamelessly borrow it. We might give them even credit sometimes. And the other thing that we wanted to do is, we wanted to show that the summer CLAFPA meeting, the Council of Large Public Housing Authorities, will be in Atlanta, and we think that that's an honor too because Terry just got on the board, and right away, we are hosting the CLAFPA meeting, and so we think that is exciting. It's going to be at the Cigna at Hilton at the Georgia World Congress Center, and so we think it's going to be a very, very good event. We have extended invitations to all of you and hope that you can participate. We have Ralph and others working on some of the logistics and helping CLAFPA with that coordination. There's a tour of some of our properties as a part of it. We think it's gonna be a really, oh, I forgot about Roosevelt Hall, we're gonna host a reception there. You see, I'm getting a little excited about it, but I think it's gonna be a really, really good, good event. And so, then that leads us to, well, what are we doing about people? So the first two events talk about the fifteenth annual Atlanta Housing Senior Farmers Market that was held at the Civic Center. There's more than two hundred and sixty seniors that were intended in attendance. There was twenty-three participants. Kaiser Permanente provided some fresh fruits and vegetables along with blood pressure screenings. Fulton County contributed some blood pressure cuff. There was a cooking demonstration, a fitness demonstration by Coach Darryl, a yoga meditation, and fun games of bingo to wrap the day up. It was a remarkable event, and we were very, very pleased, Resident Services and the rest of our team was able to participate there on the behalf of seniors. And I don't know whether you had a chance to go to that, Commissioner, or not?
I was there, and I spoke to the seniors and other participants that were there, and we had a wonderful time. Thanks, Atlanta Housing, for putting that event on, and for the sponsors that helped out as well. We had a good day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and the weather was very nice, and all worked out nicely. And then we had Healthy Kids Day, those are the last two, and we want to invest in our future, in the future of our next generation, and that was on Saturday, April twenty-six, I'm sorry, at the Arthur M. Blank YMCA. And there, we had about forty-eight households there and about seventy-eight youth impacted. And what I like is, we have books that we can distribute. And so every opportunity, our Resident Services and Choice Neighborhoods and others are given an opportunity to distribute books. And what we are trying to do is to have our youth have libraries of their own. And the thought is, if you distribute these books and they read them and they have a library, maybe they get very excited about reading, and we know that reading is fundamental for advancement on the educational front. And so vendors there were Fulton County Sheriff's Department, Fulton County Library, Happy Helpings, Royalties Emporium, Children's Books Author, Serene Ashley, and Local Farm Items. And so what we are trying to do on these events is bring others in so it can help us with our broader partnership strategy, so that they can actually see you can benefit and you can collaborate with Atlanta Housing, and here are some of the benefits that you see directly. And so that's what we are trying to do. We then went to, thank you, we can go to the next one. We then went to, here you see some plantings, you see some familiar faces that are familiar around town, and this was Atlanta Housing and Foodwell Alliance did at Lila Valley, this community farm. And this is a new vision for that whole area, which is long vacant fourteen-acre site, and it once was home to a hundred and seventy-five public housing units, but the land is now being reimagined to center on food and on health and on housing. And this collaboration takes about seven point four acres and starts an urban farm. And so we had a number of people, fifty volunteers from Atlanta Housing and Foodwell Alliance, constructed green boxes and planted fruit, vegetables, herbs, flowers, and this was an exciting event, too. It was outside, but it, and we are reimagining how places look. And we are reimagining as to what is possible in an urban center. And so when you look at that and you see all of the trees and all of that, you don't get the feeling that you're in the city, but we are, and we're bringing this to everyone. So, we're excited about that, too. So the media was there, Eleven Alive, Atlanta News First, WSB, Rough Draft, and Urbanize Atlanta. And so if you recall, when some of you first came on the board, no media covered anything unless it was bad. And so now, our comms department has changed that narrative, and along with the rest of the hard work of Atlanta Housing and the work of this board, we've changed that narrative so now people are following us for positive stories also. And so we think that that is very, very exciting. And on the other side, we had Sylvan Hills closing. This is a very, very technical closing. It's developing ten point two acres, two hundred thirty-three new units, about fifty-two million dollar property development costs. And the reason that we like it is, there was a new feature that there's a conveyance of privately owned land to Atlanta Housing and then reconveying back, leasing back. And so what we're showing the development community is that if you have something innovative, we will partner with you. But bring something innovative to us, of course, bring the financing, correct, correct, Dr. Ferguson, make sure you have a balanced financing budget. But, and this one had about eight different levels of finance, and so we are excited. And the thing we'd like to let our development community know is, we are not scared of complicated deals. What we want, though, are deals that are gonna bring quality affordable housing into our communities. That being said, special thanks to the real estate team and finance and OGC and everybody else that makes the closing happen and actually get funded. So, every time, we'd like to show you what is happening with our dashboard. And so, as you know, we have six goals. The first one is to increase affordable housing, and here you see on our dashboard, we produced twenty-eight sixty-nine new affordable units, we preserved about thirty-eight ninety-six, and if we total that up, that's sixty-seven sixty-five, which conveniently is about sixty-seven percent of our goal. And so we are very excited, we're gonna meet our goal, but we're excited about the progress that is happening. We've repurposed about a hundred and twenty-two acres of land, and we've spent about a hundred and seventy-one point two million dollars on creating and preserving affordable housing. Under goal number two, preserve housing assistance, we assisted about twenty-six hundred families who were at risk of homelessness, and that surpassed our goal by about a hundred and eighteen percent. Number three, the third goal talks about create opportunities to thrive, and here's where we've impacted twenty-six hundred-plus youth through educational programs, and we're about eighty-eight percent of our goal. One of the most exciting things is, we provided forty-seven scholarships and invested about two hundred and ten thousand dollars into our next-generation youth. And then we provided care for about fifty-one hundred residents and, or individuals, and we are helping individuals that we are housing, we are helping individuals that are in danger of homelessness or at risk of homelessness, and we are helping anyone else that we can possibly help, perhaps not with our resources, but maybe it's just a referral or a kind ear. And so we are excited about that. Goal number four talks about building partnerships. We've raised about one point nine million dollars, and I know we're working to raise even more. This is about ninety-five percent of our goal. Communicating our impact, the Lila Valley, I've mentioned about four or five news outlets, so it's communicating what we are doing. There's a media interview set up with Axios and Dr. Alan Ferguson. I'm not quite sure when that's happening, but it's happening soon, and he's gonna say great and wonderful things about Atlanta Housing and about our development program, so we are excited about that. And goal number six talks about strengthening AH operations, and we continue to make significant strides in this area. We participated in a week-long recycling challenge within our building. You probably don't know this, but Atlanta Housing is very competitive with regard to our internal employees, and so all departments participated. And what it worked, how it worked was, we designated recycling bins on each floor and placed them at the parking level, and then employees brought in their plastic and their electrical wire recyclables to the bins, and we then tallied who did the most. And so, the winning floor was announced on May fifth, plastic and film, winning floor, first place was the sixth floor, second place was the second floor, and third place was the fourth floor. I'm not gonna mention who's on those particular floors, but you can see who's smiling. I believe it might be real estate on the sixth floor. I don't know, but it might be. The electrical wire and cords, the winning floor again was the sixth floor, second place was the second floor, and third place was the fifth floor. And so this was sort of friendly competition, but also bringing awareness of sustainability and what we can do when we put our resources together. Our last slide, or next to last slide, talks about all that's happening. A lot is happening in June. We have two conferences that are gonna be in town that we're participating in, and there's a lot happening with our Resident Services and our Choice Neighborhoods, and we wanted to give you those dates so that you could see those, and please feel free to join us whenever you can. We think that this slide is one of the most important slides there, and that is because this is the people slide. This is what we are doing to impact people. Now, that's not to say the other slides, otherwise we wouldn't have shown them if we didn't think they were important. They were important, too, but those are sticks and bricks, and those are relationships, and all of that's important. But this slide gets down to, who is it that we're serving and how is it that we're impacting them? And this slide allows us to actually talk to folks to see what our impact is, not what we think it is, but what it actually is. And so that's why we want to show this. With that, I thank you for the opportunity to chat a couple minutes about what we are doing. We are excited about where we're headed. I should mention two other things that weren't here. We are operationalizing our CULTRI, that we don't want it just to have a document and then it not live and breathe in the agency. And so there's a task force that's put together to figure out, what can we do to operationalize it, to talk about it in different ways? We are doing that. The other thing, in June, we didn't put, we have the June Board Meeting in which we'll bring our budget to you, and so you'll be hearing much more about that early June. Somebody will be reaching out, and thank you, Commissioner Faruqi, for your leadership and your help on that. So we'll be bringing both of those things along with some other assortment of things. So with that, I again appreciate the time and efforts that you are serving on this board. This board is different from any other board that's around, and we, but it's a good difference. With that, I'll take any questions or comments you might have.
I feel to thank all the employees at Atlanta Housing for working on that farmers market and all that you all do. It's a lot of work after work, and I know, I know it's a lot of work, and we do appreciate what you all do for the residents that we serve, and I'm thanking you on their behalf and my behalf as well. Thank you all so much for the hard work that you all do for us.
Thank you, Commissioner. Our pleasure.
All right, well, I will just echo, so I was fortunate enough to participate in the legacy, I think, the Bowen Homes Resident Advisory Council?
Yes.
I think it's RAC. So I just want to say, I was impressed at how much work we put in, that you guys put in, I should say that, to.
This week?
It's kinda, but you know, I didn't do anything but sit there and help advocate in my other capacity as the Westside Hollowell Foundation Executive Director, and we're working to ensure that when they come back, there's, that the community has really been critically important to the projects and how those projects evolve. But while I was there, I was very impressed by the breadth and the width that was invested to make sure that people are ready to come back, not only just for the purposes of having a place to stay, but just for their own life skills and all the things that come with that, right? I think there was some edgy, some financial planning, investments, credit, support, I'm thinking of a few, probably a few more things that I'm gonna leave out, but I just wanted to just say that I was very, very impressed, I mean, to the point that people make in terms of, it isn't just a nine-to-five, I mean, we were there till seven-thirty, eight o'clock, and so I was excited about it, and I just want to say thank you to the team on the Choice Neighborhood side who was focused on that neighborhood, and I'm sure they're doing it for many others. So, with that said, and it also reminded me of how busy Roosevelt Hall is. Uh, Roosevelt Hall is busy, yeah, I, I mean, you see all those dates, all that's at Roosevelt Hall, June will be busy, if you ever stop by, there's always something going on, and so it's, I'm glad that we've revitalized it and have made it a very active part of not only the West Side, but those neighborhoods, um, on the West Side. So, uh, I don't have anything else, but, uh, so if, unless someone else does, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn. All right, uh, so moved by Commissioner Faruki, may I have a, uh, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
And so I didn't hear any nays, and so the meeting is adjourned, and the time is two thirty-six P.M.[1648.58]